The order.
Mr. Albro.
Present.
Mr. Cal- Ms. Calderon, Mr. DiCosta.
Present.
Ms. Koffinger, Mr. Lombardi.
Present.
Mr. Aluno, Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Vice President Dunn.
Here.
President Gomez.
Here.
President Regent?
President Regent, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Four statements. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the New Milford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having a date time in place, barrow posted in the Borough Hall and the New Milford Public Library. Notices have been sent to the lecture in the twin borough move. The Board announces that under its long-standing policy, it will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Meetings of the Board are open to the public, and all members of the community should feel free to participate. Before coming to the Board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public. The first at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items only, and the second at the end of the meeting for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the Board, but all comments will be considered. The Board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the state of New Jersey, members of the public are asked to not speak negatively or in derogatory manner about any employee of the Board or any student. We're going to start off with a presentation, Mrs. Biner, European Culinary Arts Trip for Fall 2024.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to come and present this. So, Mrs. Westerman and...
Watson.
Watson. And I are proposing to take a group of students next year in conjunction with Teachers' Convention and Election Day, that timeframe in November, so the students won't miss as much school. It's an eight-day trip. So it's called "The Taste of France." To provide students in New Milford with a language and culture experience of France. The students will primarily stay in Paris, but go to the surrounding areas. They will be doing some French cooking, as well as some French speaking with French classes. So it's basically French classes on my culinary arts and my international foods students. So we set out to give the students some real-life language experiences, to develop an understanding of the different cultures. This is not my first trip I've taken with the students of New Milford. In 2017, I took a group of students to Italy, where they participated in a global summit about the future of foods. And then in 2018, I took a group to China with the Mandarin students. And basically, what I've learned through all this traveling is that although we may be different and live in different countries, we're very similar. Like even when we went to China, there was a lot of similarities. And when we went to visit the high schools, the kids were onto the same thing, and the kids were like, wow! So it kind of brings us from big, big world to kind of a little bit smaller to us. So that's one of the reasons why I like the trip. They will be doing a culinary, so that's with culinary. They will be going to a cooking lesson. They'll also be tasting chocolates, which we should go separate for. They will learn how to get around a new environment. They probably, with you guys, with the parents, they rely on you, but then when they step out of their comfort zone and travel into with a school, they're responsible to remember where the plane tickets are back in the bag, you know, making sure everything gets on the bus, you know, there's somebody there to remind them. So it is a growth experience as well. I'm not going to click on this because it's actually the brochure that I yearly have. Okay, so the dates projected are November 4th through the 13th of 2024. And again, I believe that will coincide with the Teachers' Convention. So we will travel, and you have the itinerary there as well. So that's the purpose of the trip. Prior to coming to you guys, I did kind of survey the students to see how many students would be interested in actually doing this trip. And presently, we have about 15, 16 students who are really interested in that, in coming. So we are scheduled to have our first parent meeting in next Tuesday, if the Board approves the trip. And then we do have a variety of fundraisers planned, like we're going to do here in school. We're going to have like a bake sale, bake sale, just to kind of get a little money. And then we're going to do a bigger fundraiser of friends showing a movie in the auditorium. And then perhaps even doing a fracture to help defer some of the costs. Questions? I hope I'm facing really.
Oh, sure.
The company, this is a newer company that I haven't used before, but it works the same way as the other one that I've used. They do offer travel protection. They have people around the world, in case there is an issue that arises that we need to be, to deal with, they're there for us. There is like, each student does have the option of taking travel insurance, so if by any chance something does happen that they personally can't go on the trip, they will get their money back.
Is it open to all students or certain grades?
So presently, we are, because Sandra teaches in the middle school, so it's her eighth graders, which will be next year's freshman, then this year, present freshman, and then the juniors and, I'm sorry, sophomores and the juniors, not the seniors, obviously, because they will graduate it.
So they're either her students or your seniors?
Yes.
Not just open to anyone? That's what I want to know. Okay.
But I would be, I would throw it out to the academy students, too, if they didn't have any of her, if they wanted to go. If it was of interest.
Okay. Question, are there any other adult chaperones, staff going with you?
Well, presently, there would just be myself and Sandra, but if we got enough students like that we thought we needed, an extra person, then we would ask. Maybe our technical person would come along. So yes, so presently, it's just the two of us.
And that would be roughly, what was the, is there?
So it would be six, six students to one chaperone, six to one ratio.
So if you go over 12?
If we go over 12, then we would invite another chaperone.
How many students have, Susan?
Presently, there's six, 15, 15. So, you know, we haven't had the general sign, the sign up yet.
Right.
So, you know, kids might say yay, and the parents might say no. So, but I did, like, when I gave the kids the information, the price is on there, so the parents do come to the meeting knowing how much it's going to cost. And it's about $3,700 for the trip, for the eight days. That includes airfare, food, the hotels, lunch, or breakfast and dinner. Lunch, we would be on our own, for which, again, we would probably use some of the, hopefully, fundraising money. That's what I did when I went to Italy. We used the fundraising money to subsidize, so the kids didn't have to buy the lunch. They came out with the fundraising money.
So I have a question. Because of the other trips that you've been on and the ones that have been presented, first of all, by the way, thank you. This is, it seems like it's very interesting. There's, a lot of times, there's certain deadlines to these trips where, you know, the initial deposit and then all of that. So what is the first deadline?
So the, so when we have our meeting, if the Board approves, our meeting next Tuesday, then they have until December 20, like a month, to put their first deposit down, which is really just $50 to hold their spot. And then this company breaks it down, they can have an option of paying every month a certain amount, come out. They also offered students to have a fund, a fundraising page that the students could send out to whoever they wanted to, and maybe get, like, Brent Hammond and Uncle's. Again, but it's coming close to the holiday times, maybe they would say, okay, instead of getting the tax, get me, give me donation for this. So then it is broken down, and you can pay this.
Okay. So it looks like they would, students would miss three days of school, the Monday and Wednesday before Teacher Convention, and then the Monday after. So really, not, not a lot of school missed. I would, I am going to ask you to, when your students sign up and let you know with that initial payment, to find out whether or not they have any medical needs.
Okay.
Because if you need a nurse, you need to secure a nurse early in advance. We had an issue with another trip where a student had nursing needs, and we couldn't secure the nurse, and then the insurance company, it was a problem.
Okay.
So that's really important, to make sure if you, if you need a nurse. And I highly encourage all the families to take the insurance. You know, you can't require them to, but it's got to really be an emphasis in your parent conversation, but that's super, super important. Yeah.
Does Explorica have nurses, have people, have staff that are going to be?
I know they have support systems. I don't know if they have an actual, you know?
Medical.
No, but that would be a question I should ask.
Does anyone else have any questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, Superintendent of Schools Report, Daniel Chanley.
Hi, everybody. So tonight, I have my... Okay, so we'll start with suspension report for the month of October. At the high school, we had two days of in-school suspension, for one each, for two infractions. At the middle school, oh, those middle schoolers, we have one, two, three, seven, seven days, seven individual days of in-school suspension for seven individual isolated incidents, and one day of out-of-school suspension for one incident. At Berkeley, we had two days of in-school suspension for one incident and one day of in-school suspension for another incident. And at Gibbs, no suspensions for October. Okay, and let's just leave HIV. Okay, at the high school, we had two claims brought to the principal. Both of those claims were forwarded for a full investigation. One of them was confirmed as meeting the definition of HIV, and one is unfounded. Middle school, six incidents brought to the principal for review. Five were forwarded to the HIV specialist for full investigation. One was not forwarded following the principal's preliminary determination. Out of those five, two were confirmed as meeting the definition of HIV, and three were not. They were dealt with as code of conduct. Again, October for Berkeley, four were brought to the principal for review, four were forwarded for a full investigation, and four were unfounded as bullying. And for October, Gibbs, one was brought to the principal for review, it was forwarded for a full investigation, and it was unfounded. And tomorrow, I will have a full report with good news.
Okay. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Report, Lauren Adoksta.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I have just a few updates to share with you tonight. I would like to start with some information regarding recent assessments. These are assessments that I've spoken about before. But recently, the score reports for the INVIEW assessment were mailed home to our elementary parents. As a reminder, the INVIEW assessment, do you remember?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, it just blew everybody's head off.
There you go.
This piece of paper came home, and scores and stuff.
Yeah.
What is this? What do I do with this?
So I'm hoping that I could shed some more light on this for you and clarify some of those questions. So the INVIEW is a standardized assessment that is used to measure students' cognitive abilities, including verbal and quantitative reasoning. This is an assessment that has been administered for several years and was in place when I came into the district back in 2013. So in spring of 2020, we suspended the administration of this assessment because of obvious reasons, and resumed this fall and made up for some of those cohorts of students which we missed during the suspension of the assessment. Okay? So we stopped it in the spring because of COVID. A few cohorts of students missed the assessment, and then this spring, we tested students in grades one through four. Okay, or I believe it was two through, two through five. The INVIEW helps us evaluate students' individual strengths and areas of weakness, but most importantly, we use it for programmatic decision-making, especially in regards to gifted and talented. So I often talk about this scrapbook and getting this comprehensive profile of each child. The INVIEW is just another one of those measures. Most of the measures that we have in place, all of the other measures, measure academic achievement, students' mastery towards expectations set forth by the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. INVIEW is different. It's giving us a profile of students' cognitive abilities in those areas of reasoning. So there's a lot of information included in the score report that came home, but I wanted to help understand what it is that you're reading. So when you're reading your child's INVIEW score, higher scores suggest stronger cognitive abilities. The scores reflect your child's performance compared to what we call a normative group. So performance compared to a normative group means how well your child's cognitive abilities align with or deviate from the average performance of a representative group of students. For example, when you bring your child to the pediatrician for height and weight check, they are plotting your child's height and weight on a growth chart, and a child who is in the 75th percentile for height is taller than 75% of students or children who are in the same age group. So it's not a score. We're looking at it as a simple, yeah, percentile. Yeah. Okay.
So for some parents, you see something that says, like, 66% percentile, and you would think, 66? My child has never scored that low on anything before. It's not an achievement score, it's a percentile score. So if you plotted your child on the growth chart at the 66%, you would say, he's slightly taller than most kids his age. Not, not a bad thing, but it's different than the other types of assessments that we say, and that could have been the reason that some people were maybe surprised by what they saw, the numbers.
It was an assessment that was administered to all of our students, particularly because we do use it for identification in our gifted and talented program. It differs from the IQ score that students with special, parents with students who have unique abilities or special education students. That is part of their formal evaluation, and this is completely separate and different. So it has no reflection of an IEP or a student with, in special education. The information actually is pretty helpful on the score report. There is a general interpretation which explains the normative group and how a student is being compared to students in their age group. And then on the second page, there's detailed information, it's very brief, but it explains each of the five subtests which were administered: sequences, analogies, quantitative reasoning, verbal reasoning words, and verbal reasoning context. It even provides some examples of what questions might look like in each of those categories. A simple Google search will turn up some sample questions, but I'm happy to provide those if anybody is interested, just reach out. So I did feel like maybe there were some questions about that, and I wanted to help you better understand that this evening. Also, following under assessment, I had previously spoken about the NJGPA. We administered that this fall for our students who have not yet met graduation proficiency. We, preliminary scores from the fall administration, which took place the week of October 10th, were made available this week through our state assessment platform. The performance reports will not be shared with you until those scores are published, and that is expected to be by December 6th. We're also waiting for PSET scores, which should be available by November 16th. So they were not available today, we're hoping by the end of this week to have them. As a reminder, there are multiple pathways for meeting the requirements for graduation. First pathway being proficiency on the NJGPA in ELA and math. Second is by meeting proficiency on one of the identified alternate assessments, PSAT being one of them. And the third pathway is by portfolio appeal, which lets us gather artifacts in order to demonstrate students having met requirements. Hopefully, at the December meeting, I will be able to share, what is the date of our December?
The 5th.
The 5th.
Tuesday, the 5th.
Okay, if they're published by the 5th, I'll have that information that evening, if not in January, I'll share out the scores. That being said, internally, we are already using that information and taking appropriate next steps, so that we're moving our students along. The High Impact Tutoring Grant, NJDUE's High Impact Tutoring Grant is a competitive funding initiative aimed at supporting schools in implementing effective and targeted tutoring programs. It is competitive. I did share that districts had to submit an application in order to receive funding. I am happy to report that our district application was submitted on November 6th, and last week, we received notification that our application was evaluated by a panel of reviewers and has been determined to be eligible for award. We are now in the pre-award process, so we really can't begin spending that money until the award is finalized, but we are, were found eligible for a total amount of $114,990.
Nice.
Just $10 short of $115,000. Yes.
Can you remind them who the target group is, according to the state?
Yeah, so we're, we are prioritizing, it's really the guidelines with that fall under the High Impact Tutoring Grant, that priority is given to students in third and fourth grade who may have experienced disruptions in their learning during COVID. That being said, there are some, you know, we have to kind of start there, and then we can expand. We're exploring options, all options really are on the table at this point. As far as providing services for students, we're looking at staffing internally. We're also looking at partnering with one of the NJDUE-approved vendors who provide these services for students. More information will be shared with you as it becomes available. And it's that time of year again, so I'm now in the process of meeting with teams across all grade levels to engage in program planning meetings for the 24, 25 school year. Last, last week, we met with high school teams. Thursday, we're meeting with the middle school, and later in the month, we are meeting at the elementary level. During this time, we look closely at existing programming, course offerings, we identify what our next steps may be, we look at potential new courses, how we can grow, what's already in place, look at new materials. We will be looking closely at the areas of English Language Arts and Math as we continue revising curriculum to align to the newly adopted standards. And this work is already happening and ongoing up until the budget is presented to you later in the spring. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Any questions?
I have a quick one. So on the High Impact Tutoring Grant, I know, like, the SRA, you know, you have spending period, right? That you had to spend that.
Yeah.
I'm sure you can, you can figure this out, is there one for this, too?
There is, and the, the actual project period, I think, opened something like September 1st, but districts, obviously, yeah, we were, they're told that we cannot spend, which makes perfect sense, until the award is finalized. So even though the project period started in September, no districts have...
They didn't even apply?
No, yeah. And then it runs through either the end of August or the end of September in 2024. And so it's for one year, the project period is one year.
Okay. So once it is, it's something you're going to be able to do, and maybe do through the summer, even if it's a possibility, but whatever it is, it's not going to go into September?
Maybe. It may be through the end of September.
Okay. It may have been a little more realistic.
Any other questions?
Yeah. The INVIEW, is that a national, state, or district? What is?
National.
And is that, you just choose to use it in this district, or does everybody have to take it, and then, then some districts either use it or they don't?
So that's a local decision, but districts do use an assessment, it may not be INVIEW.
You might have COGAPs, CAT tests.
Multiple ones.
Yeah, they're different. You might have taken California Achievement Test when you were at, I took that. It's the same type of a test. It's a, it's basically a cognitive abilities. Sure.
Do we have anywhere on our website that has like a, like a summary or a rundown or a list of the testing that the students take?
Yes.
Yeah, so just maybe to remind.
Great question. So actually, each year, we are required to notify parents. There's a required parental notification of adjustments that will be administered during the school year, that is posted on the website in a very neat chart, and it includes a wealth of information. I encourage you to look at it if you haven't seen it, including the name of the assessment, the grade levels that we'll be testing, the duration of the assessment, a link for resources for parents, and any scoring information, resources that may be available. and any scoring information, resources that may be available. This is also blasted out to everybody in the different, all of our parents via school messenger.
Before October first.
Before October first.
That's the requirement.
So there's multiple, there are multiple ways that the information goes out. It's not just they're getting it, you know, at their doorstep.
No.
So and then before every testing situation that we have, the building principal or guidance counselor will then communicate, or the classroom teacher, communicate to the parents what the students will be. Just a reminder, next week is whatever.
Earlier, I think it was, well, it was before testing, obviously, a letter did go out from the elementary schools notifying parents of this assessment. I think in the past, because we were doing it year after year, maybe, you know, a neighbor in the park, in the parking lot or someone that they were, was familiar with the assessment, because we've had a few years now that we haven't administered it. I don't think our elementary parent base is as familiar with it. But the notification did go out.
And parents that have questions about the assessment, like do they reach out to the teacher or the building principal? Or, you know, I mean, how do they, if they want to speak to a person about, you know, trying to understand the test a little bit more in detail, who would they, who would they contact?
I'm guessing that some of those conversations happened during conferences last week. But I know that the letters are coming from the building principals. So either the principal or the vice principal, who's also versed in the assessments and has an understanding, would be happy to address those. I'm also answering questions as they come in as the district testing coordinator.
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. Business administrative reports, staff meeting.
Good evening. So it's a busy time of year in the business office with the reports that are due at this time of the year. So tomorrow, we have the DRTRS, which is the transportation, the report of district resident students that are transported. We also have the mid-year budget review that's due tomorrow. The ASSA is due December first, which is the funding, the application for school aid that is due on December first, that will fund our twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So we're, we're a bit busy. We finally received our new salt truck that was purchased last year due to the chip and the car industry issues. We purchased it over a year ago. And so fortunately, it was delivered before any snow or salt or whatever our needs are, ice. We were fortunate last year that there was very little, and the town was able to help us when we needed to be salted for any ice. We continue to have some high balances with our food services. And so we've sent out letters. I try to send them out twice a month to families who have high balances because we don't want those to get too out of control. So please be mindful of your student lunch balances. On tomorrow night's agenda, F twenty-three, twenty-four, four point forty-five. I just want to bring to your attention, because that was approved earlier in the year. And I especially want to call your attention to the Bergen Academies historically. I would say probably at least the last ten years, Bergen Fields had been transporting our Bergen Academy students. And it was costing the district quite a bit of money for them to transport there. And so this year, we're fortunate enough to have one of our own buses transporting and picking up. So that, that's a big savings. And then we were formerly transporting a student from Crestville, and we are no longer transporting them. So that's the other change to that resolution. We are also on the agenda for tomorrow night is an approval for Solutions Architect. It's F twenty-three, twenty-four, point one one five. And that's for their help to assist in the rod grants. So we did receive our initial approval for the rod grants, which would be to complete the district, the district's roofing needs. So this past summer, we did the Berkeley roof, and we hope to get funding for the high school and the gives roof, which then all of our district roofs will be updated. And DEO was done not that long ago and is still within its useful life. We did do small renovations there to keep up with it. And then also as part of the rod grant is the high school HVAC, which is original to the building. So it's a two compressor unit, and one compressor is currently not working. They don't make the parts anymore. And so if that goes down, we're in trouble. So hopefully, we'll be able to get that. Unfortunately, the lead times on mechanical are quite large, that that is likely not to happen next summer, even with this approval, and would happen sometime during the school year. So like this year with our lighting project that's going on, we had to shut down the auditorium briefly. But we tried to do it in the least disruptive manner. And so that would likely be the plan for the high school HVAC. But as we get more information, I will keep you updated. And finally, we successfully opened our Berkeley preschool program at the end of October. And we were able to add the route into our daily transportation schedule. And so all is well at our Berkeley preschool. Great. And that concludes my report.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Any correspondence?
None this evening.
Agenda items for discussion. Review tentative agenda for the regular meeting to hold on November fifteenth. Any questions for ongoing review of board action? Any questions for review of educational programs and curriculum? Any questions for review of personnel recommendations? Tony?
I have questions concerning the high school Title I program that we're looking to put together this year. Perhaps maybe in our, in our folders for tomorrow's vote. My questions concerned job description for the instructional coordinator. And I observed that the rates have increased from last year, and I was wondering whether that was contractual. I think the freshman, the grade nine idea is wonderful. Perhaps maybe just a little synopsis of what we're looking to do with that program. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions for review of finance and facilities? Any questions for review of policy? Okay. Any old business? A new business? Open to the public. As outlined in the, in the NIMEL for Board of Education by law zero one six seven, each statement made by our participants shall be limited to three minutes. Any motion? Nicole Dunn, seconded by Tony Albro. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
What was the motion? I'm sorry.
Do you have?
Open to the public.
Open, yeah. Do you, do you want to say anything?
Gotcha. Yes, how you doing? Thank you so much.
Just state your name and town.
Name and town?
Yeah.
Name and town.
Dan Nimmel. So obviously, we're active parents here, very into outdoors education. I can't thank you guys enough. I know this is generally a voluntary crew, and the fact that you put so much effort and time into not only your own, maybe your own childhood, I don't know, but everyone's childhood. I just wanted to state, thank you so much. We, we have a lot of concerns on how things are being handled in the school system from a safety perspective, from a communications perspective, and from a lot of perspectives, frankly. The last time I've come to ordinate was approximately a year and a half ago, I want to say. At that time, the discussion was more about people's concerns about the curriculum that could generally be viewed as political, so to speak. And the takeaway from that, I was given some follow-up steps, speak to the curriculum expert and do this. I will say, I've sent emails to almost everyone in Wordbed. I have over seven calls. This is a year and a half later. Four voicemails and not one answer. So just so you know how things are being handled on the, I'm sorry, on the paid side of things, which is concerning, very concerning. I took a look before I came here. I've been, I bought my home in the north about twenty-three years ago. My average tax has been over twenty-four thousand. We're about twenty-seven thousand now, of which I calculated I spent over three hundred fifty thousand dollars towards the school system. And my daughter is in four years now in school. So I think that, you know, I have a right to be concerned. I have, I've invested in this. I've also, you know, want to see the children flourish. And, and it's just very concerning. So that's, that's just one example. I don't need any answers on that anymore. We've gotten them, you know, through other means. But unfortunately, I couldn't get them through the official appropriate channels. In addition to that, we now have, as we heard, H. Yeah, there's been multiple HIV reports filed. The way they're handled is, we're not looking for transparency. We understand that there's privacy with children, but there can be explanations of steps or ways they go about it. And it's been very standoffish. I've sent you, Ms. Chalney, is that right? I'm sorry. Okay, I don't want to say. I don't know. Twenty-plus emails at this point.
You've sent to me or you copied me on?
You were copied and called out and, and zero response. In addition to, you know, HIV reports, which I have statements from people. And, you know, my daughter was told she was going to be thrown in bed and raped. She was told then.
Okay, but we can't, we can't talk about children.
I can talk about my child.
We're not disclosing.
Yeah, we're not saying anything about my child. She was told she, after that, she was, well, first, I'm sorry. I apologize. First, she was told she was going to put, be thrown in bed and had, you know, he was going to have sex with her. Next, she was thrown on the floor and raped.
The statement was that this boy wanted to rape her child. And the last statement was that he's going to.
Most recently, the statement was, he was going to kill her pet in front of her and then kill her. So all of this apparently, now this is, we filed two HIV reports. I'm aware in the last two months, there's four HIV reports filed. Apparently, we're hearing they're all unfounded, which is, you know, a very big concern because we happen to know the individual who was accused actually admitted to doing it. So I'm not sure what the unfounded part is. And I'm not looking to bust anyone, but I cannot, I need a safe environment for my child. I also need the Board of Educate, not the Board, whatever it's called. I need the members who run this to follow the state laws. We have spoken to the state commissioner. These filed, reports were not filed appropriately with the state at this point. And this is preliminary, so we need to dig further. My issue is, if it's not resolved, I don't know what my recourse is. We have spoken to lawyers. And the problem is, everything I do will hurt the school. And that's the last thing I want to do. Not worried about offending anyone tonight. My daughter is the most important thing. I don't mean any offense, but I need appropriate action. I don't need anything to happen. I need to be responded to. I need to be just let in on it. The, the fact of no answers, which is exactly what happened the last time with, with the political movement or whatever it was, just leads to more suspicion. It doesn't solve a problem. And this, this is the problem, right? So no answer is you're not addressing it in perception-wise. And if it's not reality, you can tell me that, but no one can tell me that. So we are very concerned. I now had to give my daughter extra counseling because of this incident at my own pocket. She's struggling. Her teachers are saying she has not been seen. Now she has a tail in school and she has a conscience because of this. This is, this is insane. And this has to be addressed. So if the board's not aware of what's actually going on in that office over there, there really needs to be. This, this is inappropriate. And, and it's, it's, I'm not going to go away until I get an answer. I know I'm probably annoying everyone, but I'm going to continue.
We do have a three-minute, you did go over, and I didn't want to stop you. But I just didn't, I don't know if you want to add, add something because it's three minutes. You know?
Sure. My concern is, so as a parent, I've been told I can go to the website and file an HIV report. I've done that. This website also states that, you know, it'll take approximately ten days. I've done that. I've sat around, I've waited, I've emailed, and I've gotten the response while we're still looking into it. So here we are, a month and a half later. I still don't have an answer in terms of what is actually happening, you know, towards disciplining this child.
Or helping.
Or helping, because obviously, there's, in my opinion, after making the same child attacking my daughter, there's obviously a mental health issue that needs to be addressed. Long story short, that no answer, business doesn't work, especially as a concerned parent and the lack of communication. And then when you try to get an answer, you have this very diplomatic response. It's not very reassuring as a parent that things are being looked at. If your daughter was told in the face that she, that she wanted, that she was going to get raped, and then your daughter was in the bathroom crying in a little ball because she was upset and offended and embarrassed that this happened, what would your response be? It's certainly not going to be to sit around and wait for, you know, a response from the principal or from the superintendent. In addition to that, my daughter was put in that situation, and the child was letting the school the next, the very next day. So now, I've been humiliated because this was told to my daughter in the lunchroom that so-and-so wanted to rape her. And then my daughter has to go back to school the next day only to see the person that did that to her in the same classroom, behind closed wall. I don't care if it was in-school suspension. So my question is, what are the grounds to suspend a child? What do they have to do? Is a death threat not good enough? Is a, I'm going to rape you not good enough? What's my answer? Are we waiting for another Columbine? Are we waiting for another act of madness to happen because this child needs mental health? So what are the grounds for a suspension? Does anybody have an answer? Because I'm open. Because death threat and rape are the two situations here.
Repeated by the same person.
And he's been harassing my child since third grade, by the way.
From other families.
Right.
Other families, not ours. So this is not a unique situation to us.
Okay.
The communication needs to improve in terms of as a parent when you open a report. Because now I just heard in the school of Berkeley, there were four incidents reported in October, which have been dismissed, unfounded. Based on what grounds? Who communicated that to the parents? No one. I have a friend, also in Berkeley, that she opened her report September twenty-fourth, I believe. Guess what? Zero answers. So where do we stand?
Thank you. You know, we hear you. I am going to close to the public. And then we either will give a response or we will get back to you at a separate time. Okay?
I understand.
So I need a motion to close. Tony Albro, seconded by Nicole Dunn. All in favor? Oppose? Would you like me to respond to the process? Sure. I think we should discuss the process and time. I can, I can talk about process. I can't speak. It's not a Q and A, so I can't respond to you at this time personally, but I can talk about process.
Sure.
So we have an HIV policy that mimics the code in process. And there are timelines for reporting, for investigating, reporting out. And then determination is reported to the board. And after the board takes action to accept the report, the parents receive a follow-up letter with the determination in the letter. And in that letter, it says, if you are not satisfied with this, this is your next step, the next recourse that you have. That's what we do. We review this every single year. I read and review every HIV. I talk to my principals about every HIV, how they're handled, what the discipline or services are that we provide to children. No answer or a vague answer probably means that we cannot tell you. It's, all we can say is that we have addressed the situation with the child and the child's family. That's all I'm at liberty to share. I realize that's frustrating, but that's all we are at liberty to share. There is a chain of command. So if I am, and as you can imagine, I am copied on emails very often. If I am one of four people who are copied on an email and the principal is responding to the email, I don't respond. If it's directed at me, I'm assuming you're not copying some other people and you're going to name me in your email. So if I'm just copied on an email respectfully, I'm not responding unless the principal can't respond, is looking for support in how to respond. It's not, so I do respond to emails from parents. I am unaware of any emails that you've sent me directly to me for me to respond that I haven't responded to. I have not received any phone calls from you since I came here. I am unaware if you've left me any messages. I answer my messages. I answer my messages.
Was your.
This is. You can't respond right now.
Well, she's calling.
But you guys can talk privately.
Yeah. As far as understanding HIV, it's very frustrating, okay? The New Jersey State Department of Education has very clearly identified HIV to, it must meet a three-pronged definition. The first prong is that it has to be a protected class or a perceived or real identifying something. I'm at the loss for a word right now. That's number one. There has to be a, a person has to be a target for a reason. Then it has to have an at-school or have a nexus to the school and it has to dramatically impact the student's education in some way. If we can't identify a real or perceived characteristic or a protected class and/or no nexus to the school and/or no impact to a child's education, it doesn't meet the full definition. And therefore, because something comes up as inconclusive or not meeting the definition of HIV, doesn't mean that it is not a serious offense. A child could bring a weapon to school, that is a very serious offense, does not meet the definition of HIV. Could threaten somebody with the weapon. It's not HIV. So I'm just, I realize that that is frustrating because you're struggling with something and you're filling out the form and you're not hearing what we did to the aggressor, for example. I realize that is frustrating. But because it doesn't meet the definition of HIV, does not mean that it was treated without severity or that it was not treated or not handled. As far as what is the definition or what is worthy of a suspension, that depends on the situation, depends on the student's age, their maturity level, depends on whether or not they have the intellectual capacity to understand what they did, if they have an IEP or 504 or something that prohibits them from maybe having the reasoning that their peers have. All of these things play into how we discipline, reprimand, or re-educate, or counsel a child. So it's very gray because we're talking about young children. I'm very sorry that you are frustrated. I can only promise you that we do follow the law and the policy and that you will receive documentation as per the law and the policy.
That was an excellent explanation, thank you. Because we haven't gotten that to the, to a before now. And if I can make a suggestion, if something doesn't meet an HIV, but everyone's guiding you to the HIV and it's still a disciplinary, like the example you used there. Why would the person you're dealing with say that? It would have been over. This is the problem, the communication.
I'll tell you why.
Yeah.
Because we're following the law and the law says, I can't tell you what it is until the board agrees with my recommendation. So I present the cases to the board. The board can overturn, like you will see in tomorrow's meeting, I'm asking them to accept the cases as presented. So they have access to some information. If they vote to overturn those decisions, then what I told you before the board meeting isn't true. So until the board votes to affirm or deny, or affirm or overturn the decisions that we make, I don't have an answer for you. And then the day after tomorrow's board meeting on Thursday, my assistant has letters prepared that are going out to parents. Now that's for October's incidents, not November's incidents. That would happen after the December 5th meeting.
So the other parent who filed on September, I've still not seen anything. I don't know if.
Correct, because those are being voted on of September. I don't know. I don't, I don't know the specific case. That parent needs to follow up and find out. I, I don't know the, I don't know the parent. I don't know the situation.
I don't think the situation's changed. Again, I appreciate it. I think, I think you can say stuff about.
But we could talk outside.
I would love that. It never happens.
She's saying.
Okay.
Board member requests for additional information. Close session. It is hereby moved that the Board of Education adjourn into executive session in accordance with the provisions of Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL, for the purpose of discussion and consideration of matters pertaining to the following subject, personnel. The minutes of the executive session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I need a motion to recess to close. Tony, seconded by Nicole Dunn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, thank you. At this point, we do need to be privately though, so we can't stay for this meeting. And we're not taking action afterwards, so no, there's something else.